Evening, it is 6:01 and I am calling the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the John Germain Memorial Library to order. This evening, we have seven trustees present. Also, we are changing the order of the agenda. Agenda, item number 11, executive session will come after item number seven, committee reports. Public expression. None, okay, check that off.
Let me check my texts, this is not usually.
Is someone taking minutes?
Yes.
Oh, you are, okay.
Yes, take care of that.
Thank you.
Everyone has had a chance to look at the minutes. Can I please get an approval for the minutes from both the regular meeting on October 16th and October 21st?
I salute.
I cannot take part in the October 21st one because I was not present, so I would have to abstain from that. So we need to buy them up.
Okay, can I get a call, a motion to approve them in minutes from the October 16th meeting?
A move.
One second.
All in favor? Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes from the October 21st strategic planning work session?
I'll make a motion.
Now, second.
All in favor?
And I abstain.
And one abstained, you're right, one abstained. Okay, report from the Friends.
If you have not already purchased your ticket for the Friends book and author, which will be up in the Scala Rotunda with George Pursh, I wholeheartedly encourage you to do so. They are also, well, come March, changing their meeting day from Thursdays on 11 to Wednesdays at 11.
No, they changed it, she didn't have a meaning, they didn't, didn't want it, but moving back to the original.
Oh, are they?
Yes.
I might have missed that email.
Oh, I don't think I mentioned that.
Okay.
Could be wrong.
Well, the Friends are considering changing their meeting day. Strike that from the minute, so I never said anything. So, they also had a really successful event in November in the Rotunda. Catherine Tremblay presented on some of the really cool things that are in the archives. And they got three new friends and the archives got a $20,000 donation out of it, so it was a great event.
It's a very good event. I want to call, I thought Catherine did a really great job, so I just want to commend her for.
She did do a really great job.
Nice donation.
Yeah.
Beautiful sound. Treasurer's report.
Okay.
You go Elliot, take away.
It's getting easier all the time. So, we've completed now moving our investments around and diversifying our banking, so it gets very simple. If you look at the, the top line, operating account at DIME is over a million dollars, that covers us for the rest of the year on operations. Now, we have not one but two savings accounts. The one at First National Long Island Bank is essentially designated as our backup in case of any problem at DIME about flow of money or anything else. I mean, $200,000 would cover a couple of months payroll, it would cover a bunch of things, so it's good to have that. And then we have a second savings account now at Morgan Stanley, currently with $200,000 in it, this will function as our capital account. And we will be putting large sums of money, which will have to move out of investments up into it as we approach big bills that we have to pay on HVAC in 2025. Other current assets are just those little bits and pieces, receivables, et cetera, that we have every, every month. So our total cash assets, 1,474, 128. Total investments, almost up to 4 million, which is great. Total assets of 5,436,086. So that's an excellent position and nice diversification and a nice balance of where our money is sitting. Mortgage, of course, gone down by the normal amount that you would expect. So, if we look just at the month of October, it was above average in expenses and that was mainly due to the fact that we had a third payroll, what we call a phantom payroll. So there were no other anomalies and that pretty much explains why it was above average. Average is like 290 pounds. Financial income was.
Makes a copy or I don't even know what would come to an odd number like that and they're like, keep the change. It just goes in.
Okay, as far as year-to-date first budget, once again, it's terrifically on target. Two months remaining, so we've done 83% of the calendar year expenses, 83.1%, so it's pretty good. And I, as I pointed out, I think Kelly and her staff too should be congratulated on, on the way they monitor these expenses and so forth to keep everything on target to this extent, I mean, this is remarkable. Okay, bill payment list, here you've got the warrant, we used to call it, $113,000 roughly average amount of outstanding checks, so that doesn't bode any issues coming up. And here's your three payrolls, they're all about the same, but it is three. Next month, we'll be back to two. Any questions?
Yeah, I've been requested, you know, we have, you usually get two phantoms a year. This year, our company, we had three. January, July, and December. So it does happen. It's cool.
Are we still calling them warrants? I feel like they got renamed.
It's technically the bill payment list, but it's like, I like the word warrant too, that's why I leave it in as.
Thank you Elliot.
You're welcome.
So we're going to take a vote for an entire report including all the warrants. Okay, go ahead.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Treasurer's report approved. Director's report.
All right, so, um, I feel like I spent a lot of time doing a lot of really important things but not getting anywhere. But we did do a lot of work, right? So we got through the employee handbook, we got through the strategic plan, we got through the annual appeal, we got through Wanda's trip to Italy. She's never allowed to leave ever again, mostly because then I had to do the schedule and I was just like. Also, Catherine and I went to the Nyla Conference in Syracuse. The content of the conference was great, the location maybe not so much. So, excited to report that it will be back in Saratoga Springs for the next three years. Let's see, what else? Ava, our hay ground apprentice, has finished her, her apprenticeship here. She was just lovely, once she's old enough to work somewhere, you know, I would hire her immediately, the staff, just, she was great. Again, the Friends had a successful event. In case you missed it on social media, thanks to Anna and Megan and myself, because I think we just come all the time, and the food pantry and all of the people in our community. We are actually about 225 pounds now away from having reached the goal of 1,000 pounds, which we had a year to do. We started this process in March, so we will actually hit that early. We will then get a bench from Trex and then we can start again in March to, to earn another bench. We will of course continue to receive plastic because it's been a really great program and people have been really excited to have it here and have it, have us a place to take it. Yeah. I mean, 1,000 pounds of plastic film is a tremendous amount of plastic film and for, and for us to be able to hit that before March, before a year, is sort of crazy.
Where are you keeping?
We keep it in the closet until it gets picked up. So it's clean plastic film, it's not, don't bring like the wrapping from your package of chicken at the supermarket here. But, or as one person did, your dog poop bag with the dog poop, Anna. It has not been without its challenges here and there. I mean, it's plastic film, but other than, other than those two incidents, you know, it's, it's worked out pretty well. Luckily, sist, we were bringing it to a drop-off location, Anthony would load it into his car and bring it. But luckily, the Suffolk Cooperative Library System worked something out with drop-off facilities by them. So we actually, it goes in the back of the van with the interloan driver and goes to SCLS and gets recycled that way.
Who measures the poundage?
We do. So what we have to do for this program is basically, it goes in a clear bag. We take a picture of the bags, we weigh them using the luggage scale from our library of things. Then we put it into an online form with Next Trucks and then everything gets sent on its way.
Are there people who come here just to deliver their bags?
Yes.
Interesting, well, I get some to the library.
It does.
Maybe they'll stay a little longer. Through the doors.
Yes. And so we're able to, you know, like the food pantry drops theirs off. I think I heard somebody who works at TJ Maxx, Maxx? TJ Maxx, no. Kids' cartoon PJ masks store TJ Maxx, two different things, my brain disagrees. Somebody who works at TJ brings the plastic from there as well. So we're very excited. It's working out. Let's see what else. Also, the new Vega catalog went live earlier this month. Ellie did some videos online explaining how it gets used. Vega is replacing something called Encore, which was not a terribly great catalog. But the classic catalog you see at our OPACs or our computer card catalogs still exists. But I'm just, you know, we're just moving to Vega. The sled is going to be at the tree lighting at Otter Pond.
What day is that?
It is December, it's in the newsletter. I don't remember off the top of my head, it's December 9th, does that sound correct?
No.
I know Emily is on vacation. So everybody's on vacation, so I'm, I'm doing storytime. Yeah, that's like going back in the wayback routine.
I'm sorry, I have it somewhere.
Do you remember looking at the newsletter?
We're just doing a fat card with a letter.
I know it's a day during the week.
The sled, is this like a Santa sled?
No, it's the, it's the bus, so the, the library bus, but it's called the sled because.
It's the ninth, I'm sorry.
It is the ninth. Because I, as, as the liver and love acronym, so it's actually Suffolk Libraries Empowering Discovery, or the sled. I briefly lobbied for the Verbus E, but I was, I was turned down. That it was vetoed quickly.
So you're disappointing kids who were expecting this end.
Well, we're not calling it the sled, we're calling it the library bus, but it is officially the Suffolk Libraries Empowering Discovery sled. And then I went to, to a bunch of meetings. I did want to mention that the children's room, you may remember, earlier, late spring, early summer, Emily and Ginta went to Family Place Training. Family Place is a library initiative that started at the Middle Country Library on Long Island. We're working on having the library become Family Place certified. They held their first parent-child workshop, which was very well attended and well received by the community, so they're going to be offering that in the spring. They also had a great touch-a-truck event, which is exactly what it sounds like, at the park. They also were out and about at the celebration of Long Pond Cream Bouts. And I did want to mention that Liz had the sixth graders visit the library to see all of the things that the team group has to offer. So they, they've been doing wonderful things in youth services. And that's my report. Personnel report is what it is. If there's anything about that you want to discuss in executive session, I'm happy to, but there we are.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports.
I just need.
Oh, merger approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the director's report.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, you know, I'm gonna slow down. Direct, okay, committee reports.
Do you want to know the statistics?
You want? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sure, I mean.
There's nothing revolutionary, I guess would be the answer to it, it's sort of, it is what it is.
We're going into winter, you can see the numbers dropping before.
Yeah, and it's sort of, and I should mention with the statistics, it's going to be a weird comparison to 2023 because we were closed in October for most of 2020.
That's right.
And we were closed for most of October in 2023 because of the glow of. So.
It's hard to believe it was a year ago.
Yeah.
Time lost. Okay, bunch of committee reports. Personnel?
Personnel did meet. We had discussed even more different changes, maybe policy, which I guess we will be adopting.
In December.
Excuse me?
In December.
In December, yeah. And we also discussed, which Kelly's contract, which we'll discuss during executive session. And some other employee issues. There was, well, people that, things we're going to be discussing in executive session as far as different staff moves and things of that nature.
Yep.
Okay, finance, budget.
We did not meet since the last meeting, I don't believe.
We may have folded it in with the personnel at last time that we met, it was nothing big, I think.
Yeah, and we had a number of exchanges about, about like setting up these new accounts and stuff like that, but no, no, no.
Okay, buildings and grounds.
Did not need, no room monitoring, the current HVAC processes goes along.
Okay.
Keeping an eye on it.
Policy and long range.
We did not meet, we didn't met, but I was sick and then I went away, so I've not been available for the past month.
Okay, but no problems. We won't fire you.
We worked by, we worked by email and it seems to.
Outreach and public relations.
We did not meet.
Mash Park met last week in this space and the park fortress is voted to purchase a used leaf truck from Summer Hill Landscaping. They do need a leaf truck. And there's discussion about a new entrance and exit to the park. And all this is to do with the Suffolk County Department of Public Works' plan to do work on the road that the turnpike there. And they still want to put in a traffic light, but rearrange things, but they are willing to hear the village, you know, presentation on putting it around about. The village has hired a consultant to come up with a plan. So whatever this plan comes out to be, the park entrance may or may not have to be moved. That is to be determined.
Hard to move those pillars.
No, 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 those stay there. What they're going to do, that would become just a pedestrian entrance.
Okay.
Okay, so. And one more thing, only because the most interesting part of those meetings is when the village board trustee gives the village board report, but something that would be germane to the library is that they are going to change their permit with respect to businesses that like want to do an event and on their premises would be something they normally would not do, like sort of alcohol or have a tent. So there'll be a different process for it. So I don't know how to affect us when we bring in the Mr. Softy truck, but I just wanted to get your heads up, you know, give you a heads up on that. And that's all, that's the news that's fit to tell. And ad hoc scholarship, we're not. Okay, so now. It is.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
6:21.
To discuss the employment history of a particular person, persons or matters of any degree. Motion, demotion, suspension, this will remove a particular person at 6:27.
I'll second.
All right.
Okay.
I make a motion to come out of the executive session at 7:27.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, now we are in regular session, we were back in regular session. 7:29 away.
Okay, I'm going to.
If anyone wants to see Kirsten's production of Vaskerville, opening night's tomorrow. Is that right? Vaskerville, it's comedic Sherlock Holmes.
Take on the hound of the basket movies.
Something like that. So it's tomorrow night, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday afternoon at 2:00 and Saturday night.
Is it that they say it's good?
They said it's good.
It's so good.
10 bucks. Thank you.
Especially since your appearance, you're spelling bee.
Okay.
No, don't be happy.
If you have decided to pass a resolution, then you should, you can either pass it now or you can address it under new business. Doesn't matter.
Let's pass the resolution now.
Okay.
Okay, so the board has proposed a 5% salary increase to Executive Director Kelly Harris. Thank you for the wonderful job you have been doing and will continue to do here for the community of John Germain Memorial Library.
I think we have to formally vote on that.
You do.
I'll make a motion to approve the 5% raise.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Merry Christmas. I just would say thank you for, for your support. Thank you for the, having faith in me and I look forward to working with all of you in the future.
Some more.
Now, and some more, so thank you, I really appreciate it.
Bravo.
Okay, all right. All right, let's do it, so HVAC update?
Yeah.
All right, so we.
Oh.
Yeah. What?
No, you'll say you did the HVAC update because I just wanted to ask if there was an aspect of the HVAC update that needed to be.
Be in executive session, no.
Okay.
None.
All right.
No, so, um, in terms of the HVAC, as some of you, you know, we were this close. Our resolution was on the planning board meeting and then it got pulled because the additional sound attenuation, which the neighbors were very happy about and wrote a letter in support of the library's project, flagged for being too high of a fence in a front yard. The John Germain Memorial Library has three front yards. So back to the ZBA we go. We, Tiffany says it's a process, it's pretty straightforward. What we're doing is for the neighborhood and to, to keep the neighbors happy, so she can't imagine that they would cause any ruckus. Let's see, so we, Rayner Group has updated our survey with all of the stuff that they need. We also went in front of historical preservation. And just as a, hey, this project is here. Thank you to Wanda and Elliot for being there in person. I was unavailable to be there and they seem genuinely, generally in support, would you say?
Yeah, definitely.
But are looking for additional renderings, because the renderings that we have did not include the sound, the attenuation sandwich on the neighbor's property. And they would like, they're, they're sort of interested in like what it looks like with that transformer box. So we've been in touch with Hollander and about updating the, the renderings. And that's sort of where we sit at the moment. It's cold in here.
It is.
It's cold when you turn heat on.
I thought, I thought you would take last time. In terms of the strategic, can we move on to the strategic plan work with this? All right, so the strategic plan. Diane had given me just one more edit. She gave me a couple of missing periods here and there, a wayward comma, a misspelling, things of that nature. She did suggest, and I did take it out, the sentence about public wifi, since writing that plan, Hamptons.com is working with the village on, on public wifi. So it's sort of, it's, it's like a, an unneeded thing. Yeah, in terms of anything else in the strategic plan, if everybody is happy with the way it's, it sits, I would recommend that we adopt it, so I can have Araceli translate it into Spanish and then we can sort of do a push out of it on our website and let people know about the community survey and the results and all of those things. Also, what I, if there's any other grammatical things that maybe some of you picked up, like we can adopt it pending fixing any of the missed commas and periods.
Yeah, I would just re-go to like all those like strategic qualities, the periods missing.
Yes.
There too, so we just give that another read through.
Yeah.
That's what we most agree with.
I just want to thank everybody for doing that. Sounds like it was a long meeting and I wish I could have been there, but I literally could not have gotten out of bed for it.
So are we going to vote to adopt that tonight?
You want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the strategic plan pending any grammatical editing.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Your second.
Motion passes.
All right, so the SCLS operating budget, you all vote on this every year and did ask the question about what did we do to be the highest raised? I did send an email to Kevin and he said, my instinct is to say it's because your John Germain is my favorite library. And I was like, nice try. But basically, the answer is, and I'll just say it here in case the public cares to know, the increases to membership dues for the Suffolk Cooperative Library System are directly related to operating expenditures. It really has nothing to do with where your income comes from. So if we're pulling from reserves or if we, we got a big donation and we spent it, it's about your operating expenditures. And in the years of COVID, and then me, you know, Kathy retiring out, me coming on in 2022 sort of being a transitional year, we did not expend necessarily what was in our operating budget and we made up for that in 2023 and, and 2024. So basically, the reason our dues went up so much is because we are actually spending our money, which we want to do, right? Like we want to, we want to be fully staffed, we want to be providing preference, we want to do all of those. So in, in future days, we should not have that sort of spike like that.
Yeah, it was a big spike compared to everybody.
Yes.
It's a payroll.
And as reality is the situation in the grand scheme of things compared to other libraries where it's a very, very small bump, it's less than $2,000, right? For all of the services that the Suffolk Cooperative Library System provides for us. It is a, a, a member vote, so if. Um, so if this board, whether this board votes to approve it or not, if everybody else votes to approve it, um. Your dues are going up anyway.
Do we only get one vote?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So we're just approving.
Hold on, do I? Hold on. I mean, you vote as a board. Uh, it's in here. I can't remember. It used to be at one point, it was like one of those things where you got.
But that wouldn't make sense to some boards or twenty-two people.
No, no, you got a specific number of votes per library. I think that is when you elect a trustee is when there's multiple votes per library, but for the budget, I think it's straight up and down.
We're not going to, because we use that van a lot, right?
But. No, we actually pay for the van. So when we borrow the van or the sled, um. We're charged for that, but we're just charged basically like a flat fee, which covers like. Gas and the employee that they sent out with it.
Yeah, no, it's what we have from, I mean, just being able to borrow, so we don't have to buy every new. New York Times bestseller. And have ten copies of each of them.
Right. So we have to vote on that?
You have to vote.
I make a motion to approve the SCLS operating budget.
I'll second. All in favor? Motion passes.
All right, so in terms of the employee handbook and policy manual, um, again, this is a first read. I know you guys got a hundred and thirty-seven page board packet. Um, so if you didn't get through all of it, um. It's okay. Um, but it's it's to put it out there that you all should have have read it and reviewed it. You'll see it again at the December meeting. The goal is to adopt it at the December meeting uh with regards to, um, again, Anne had a concern about making sure we had a little um. Retaliation, anti-retaliation clause in that grievance policy. Um.
I didn't see it in today's board packet, so I'm.
Uh, I did add it. Um, it's, I did add it. I believe what it says is. All employees shall be entitled to use the above procedures without clear upper appraisal. And it's in there. Um, I think I put it in a different paragraph.
And was that same as most other libraries now, especially association libraries?
Um. It's your pol, it's a policy that's existed here.
Yeah.
It's not a new policy.
Included in another policy. It was kind of, oh, no, because we found it in the policy committee stuck in something when we pulled it out.
That pre, the this grievance procedure? No, this was a separate procedure that existed.
And it, I mean, it had every point that is in there, but it was like, it it was not called grievance procedure or grievance policy. It was a paragraph in something else. And so we pulled it and said, let's make this, because it makes sense to go after. Harassment, sexual harassment, grievance.
Right.
Whistleblower, all those.
So it's a separate.
It's a section.
Is it catchable for all the other policies?
Yeah, I think it might have been. Wasn't it whistleblower? Because that's the state tells you.
No, it's, it was, it's, it was part of um.
It was in a weird place.
So you, you all had a policy manual, right?
And it was in the.
And it was in the policy manual and it fell under like employee. All of your employee policies, whatever that section had been called.
Yeah.
And so one of the things we did was we pulled out, like now we have like three folders and if it's ever on the policy committee next year, we're going to work on. Like different policies. Um. So basically, I've sort of gotten it tucked out into like trustee policies, patron behavior policies, um. Personnel policies. So instead of creating a. Redoing all of the policies and having you guys um. Uh, approve each policy separately. Um, what we did is we created a staff handbook. And personnel policy manual, which once adopted will take the place of all of those standalone policies.
Say, then you can review it once a year, make changes on all of them and have it as one vote saying this is now been reviewed and.
So assuming that this is adopted, would you then have each of you give?
Yeah, so once it's.
Sign off on.
So once it's adopted, um, and this was something I I had done at at Hampton Library. Once it's adopted, you, everybody will get a brand new copy of it, right? Um, they have a form that says that they have read and understand what's in it. If they have any questions, they need to come speak to. To me, um, they sign off on that form and then uh any new employees get that same form. And then what I like to do is have the staff. Reread it and re-sign that form every year, which seems like. A lot of work, but it's really sort of important because sometimes things change, sometimes people don't actually read the whole thing. Um, and then they just, again, sign off, say, I've reviewed all of the policies and procedures in this manual.
You put a page at the end of it if there's for any changes, like I've seen places do that, like this year, this got changed, so you can sort of keep track.
Yeah, we can do that. Usually what I, what I had done previously is if something was. Was updated, we would put the date by that specific policy where it was updated, but yeah, we can do that.
So you can.
Yeah.
Easily see that when stuff got changed.
Yeah.
Well, and I mean, big chunks of it, New York State is determined exactly what's going to be said. So when, but New York State will update it.
Yeah.
Every, you know, more like every five years, same thing. So.
But when you're keeping track of those changes, are you keeping that all? It's going to be a continuous thing. So you'll have from now on, once the policy is adopted.
Yeah.
You'll be shown each day when a change was made. Instead of having to look at.
Yeah, no, it's not going to be a hundred and thirty-seven different places. It's in, it's in one place.
It's good.
Um, and so that was sort of the, the issue that we had with other things is the policy manual was um. It's what I'm quite, what I will lovingly refer to as like. Um, a Frankenstein file, like it kept being updated, but it kept being updated in different versions of Microsoft Word. And so like sometimes the bookmarks went where they were supposed to go, like it was just messy by virtue of. Um, how it was updated and then some of the different policies did, it was, it was just time for a refresh. And I would say that the, the Personnel Committee worked very hard on it.
Worked very hard taking sections out and giving them to other.
You did.
Which is what should be, I mean, personnel should be covering the the employee handbook. Finance should be covering the. Finance boxes. That was always a mistake not to have it.
Yeah, so it it really worked out that, you know, last year. We got all of our finance policies in shape. This year, we did all of our personnel policies. Next year, we can look at certainly, um, I'll I'll leave it up to whomever's on the policy committee. We can look at trustee policies or we can look at um. Uh, library usage policies. Um, and then we can just sort of use that as a framework to to review it because. You know, we want to make sure that we get the time and the the grievance to what we're looking at. Okay, fair. Did, uh, so first read is, so we'll adopt that next month.
I guess that's it.
You're.
Expression. You don't have little something to.
She's cold. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-six.
I can second that. Meeting adjourned.